Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge led by Councilman David Broussard.
Receive the prayer, please. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and give us our trespasses, and we forgive all that has been against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go, go.
Mayor Protem, Ricky Gonsalas.
President.
Councilmember Brooke Markott.
Here.
Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidra Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Public comment. Do we have any public comment cards? Hearing and seeing none, I'll just remind you to put your cell phones on vibrate and we'll move on to item two.
Acceptance of the minutes of May 4th, 2021, which will publish on May 21st, 2021.
Do I have a motion? Motion by?
Second.
Councilman Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Ledbetter. Is there any discussion on our minutes? Hearing seen none, please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. Item clerk, item three A.
Public hearing for special ordinance number 2020-2021-06, amending the budget to account for total cost for repairs to Lewis Street from Admiraldale Drive to South City Limits.
Do I have a motion to open our public hearing?
Motion.
Motion, Councilman Lewis. Second, Councilwoman Reed, I think. Good. Uh, is there, uh, any public comment? We have no public comment, so I would need a motion to close our public hearing.
Motion.
Councilman Lewis.
Motion, second.
Uh, Councilwoman Reed. Great, thank you all. Madam Clerk, item four A.
Resolution 21-42, authorizing the mayor for the city of New Iberia to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement between Iberia Parish Government and the city of New Iberia relative to the GOSEP Hazard Mitigation Grant, number 1786-0128-20-L-A.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Markott and a second by Councilman Lewis. Do we have any discussion on this item? Seeing none, I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. Four B.
Resolution 21-43, giving preliminary approval to the issuance of not to exceed $12,500,000 of revenue and refunding bonds of the city of New Iberia, state of Louisiana, making application to the State Bond Commission for approval of said bonds, providing for the designation and employment of professionals and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
So moved.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
By the Mayor Protem and a second by Councilwoman Swier. Do we have any discussion on this item?
Mayor, you don't have to state the firm that we selected, correct?
No.
Okay.
Well, Jason Akers, we went to three banks and, uh, reviewed their proposals, uh, had conference calls with all of them, had personal visits with all of them, and then made a selection.
So?
Yes, ma'am.
This is more just for me for education purposes. So we can only pay the bond, the premiums on the bond with tax dollars? Sales tax dollars?
Uh, well, you can, but you can also use, I don't know if Kevin's here yet, you can also use sales tax because like the 1960 fund pays for roads, bridges, sewer, uh, sidewalks, and any other public permanent improvement. So you can end up utilizing some of the 1960 tax, which is our biggest tax, um, in addition, you know.
Okay, alright.
And we have the bond at 12 million, 12.5 is what we have down. We'll make the final decision, you know, as this gets closer. In other words, you have quite a few steps. We think that's what we're gonna do, but, you know, if I wanted to, or we, you know, once Kevin and I analyze the numbers, once we get the best deal we can get, and we look at our notes, because now we'll be looking at payment structure. Uh, we had a minimal conversation about that a while back. You know, our charge is to, this is, this is for 20 years. I need to keep our cash flow good on the front end so that we can continue to get us rolling, get us out the mud and get us moving. On the flip side, we don't want to handicap the next administration that, uh, I'm gone and then the notes are really hot, because they gave us many, many variations of a payment plan. So what we're kinda analyzing now is how can we meet in the middle, have a little more cash on the front end, but pay something that the next person is not handicapped with, with paying larger notes. The notes would get smaller instead of larger. So we have some flexibility with the financial institution to see how we structure that, and we will wait as the market is right before we close and then decide if we're, if we're doing, you know, the whole 12.5.
So, again, just trying to understand.
Yes, ma'am. And, and Jason, let me just say Jason was supposed to be here tonight or send someone, and he said it was a possibility. They wouldn't be able to, because I think where he is, they were kinda flooding in. So, uh, I'll do my best.
Yeah, no, I mean, this isn't, you know, difficult questions. It's, uh, more of a clarification for me. So we don't lock in like the rate, so we don't really know the cost of the bond?
We know approximate. We have a good rate. It's, uh, 2.5, I believe. Um, it could get a little better. Uh, but we know that that's the range of it. We know how much the note could be. Like I said, we have to pick various, uh, payment plans, if you will. But yes, we already know, and each one of them in the market was very, very similar. In other words, these people buy and sell bonds and buy and sell paper all day, every day. All of their rates were really very, very close. The, to make the decision was kinda who you felt comfortable with, who you thought was maybe too big to not give you service, or too small to not handle. You know, you had other factors. But everybody, you know, the rates are still really good, and everybody was very close at the same rate. And what they make in a fee was all very close. Actually, you know, uh, one company cut it maybe a quarter of a percent or something, but it's all pretty much kinda market value. It's, it's, you know, there wasn't a whole lot of, uh, the negotiations, we, we did what we could, but there wasn't a whole lot of wiggle room, and it's really kinda what firm you felt comfortable with, you know.
Okay. Last question.
Sure.
So the 12 million five, is that enough money to also do maintenance on our roads so that we don't end up in this situation 10 years?
No, ma'am, it's not. And you would need probably another $10 million to do that spread out over time. This is the first of what I hope is, is future. Um, the 12 million can get us very far along. I mean, we talked figures as low as eight, we talked figures as high as the 12 with our engineers and just kinda look. Uh, we will try to do everything that is, last time they did some things that they resurfaced and they coated some roads and stuff. We're trying to steer away from that. Um, but that has a purpose. The purpose is not to fix your roads, but at some point, we know as a city, what's lacking is a maintenance program. What's lacking is, you know, this is gonna take care of all the roads that are crumbling and falling apart, or a good many of them. But what is lacking is a maintenance program. You're not wrong about that. But I can't borrow enough, we can't borrow enough money to fix everything that's, needs immediate repair, uh, or short order repair, and still have enough money left over for the, uh, maintenance. But that is something that I realize is lacking, because there is a place to coat a road. Uh, coating a road helps, you know, preserve it, and you might get five, six more years out of it. Uh, we, you have never seen us do that, uh, because we haven't had the funds to do that. So that's, uh, would have to come at another day.
Okay, alright. Just trying to understand.
I didn't, no, no, good questions. Councilwoman Swier.
So yeah, Mayor, you walked correct, because one of the roads that was coated was Plantation Drive at one time. It is in my district. And that was not at all a fix. I don't think it lasted too long. But coating roads and to resurface and actually, actually getting down to the bottom is a totally different concept. We have roads that can actually get down to the bottom, and there are roads that can just, like, get surfaced five years, six years, a lot. But I also wanna make a point to some of the, to our public out there that this is a way, we hear a lot of naysayers about, oh, what's our, what's our roads are like, why we not fixing our roads, this and that. Well, here we are. We're making something happen. And I appreciate, uh, the public for, at least looking into this and seeing that we are making something happen as this council. So hopefully soon we can see some changes coming with this being renewed.
Yeah, we just had to get our finances to a point that we could, and it's been a long road to get there, but, you know, we are there and, um, you know, this is a big start for a, a road program that, you know, we, we haven't had in, in quite a few years. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
So, so just to reiterate on what Dustin did, and Dustin, I, I have several comments about, you know, where is my road, is my road getting done? And just to remind the public that we are doing a priority list with our contractors to see what the worst roads are in the city. And I'm, I'm almost certain that we're gonna, that's gonna play a big part in where we're going, what direction we're going. Right, Mayor?
Yes, our engineer is already writing districts with his team. They're already looking. We just talked before the meeting, July, August, I'll give him a little break. Uh, somewhere between, because we threw in Lewis Street that he has to do now, too. So somewhere between, sometimes in July or early August, they'll be coming to us with a list of, you know, here are the 10 worst roads in each district, let's say. And then you have input, you all represent a district, you all represent people. You know, I am bringing you the worst roads, the roads that are the biggest safety hazard, the roads that are the worst in each district. But of course you have input, of course we will talk about it. He will do a presentation publicly, because we're transparent, and we'll go from there. And, you know, if there's a road that you're adamant about not fixing, you know, for whatever reason, you're gonna bring it up and we're gonna deal with it. But I think that the, you know, uh, the engineering sound way to do it is find me the worst roads, find me the roads that, you know, are safety issues. Uh, and we go from there.
So quick question about that.
Yeah, Ricky, you were finished?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, yeah, I'm just kinda, okay. Go ahead.
You just made me think of something. You know, we've, we've had some, a lot of rain lately, so we've had some rose flood. And, you know, maybe it wouldn't ordinarily flood as bad, but we've had some roads, like in my district, I know there's been some, a lot of flooding. There's a particular road in my district that there's only like one drain that serves, I don't know, probably four tenths of a mile, or maybe even a half a mile. And they get, they have a lot of flooding. So is there a way for us to use some of this money to add drainage?
You could turn that road in now, because remember I have drainage money.
Okay.
You know, we have money from the mosquito control rebate that we get back that can only be used for drainage. So there's money there. So turn that one in now. Now, what I do want to do, you bring up a good point. What I do want to do is, once we know the roads we're, we're doing, I wanna take the time to call every utility company, to call everybody, because what I saw last time, when I was on the council many years ago, my first year, I think it's Protem, we fixed roads and it wasn't three months later, different utility companies were jackhammering, were cutting them, and then you ended up with a road that had been good and now has, you know, Industry is a great example. Industry got resurfaced. They used to take that way home, depending on where I live, there's probably, I counted 10. I counted 10 cut and patches, and some of them happened a year after that road was, was redone. So one of the things that I do wanna do is coordinate so that we look at drainage, we look at utility work that might be coming, and do our best. You still know something could happen, something could break the next day. But it would be good to coordinate that. Uh, but if you have a drainage issue like that now, you know, we don't have an abundant, you know, we can't just do everything, but we do have, turn that one in. That may be something that Public Works could handle, you know, prior.
Excellent. I'll do that one in that big canal. The one that needs the maintenance?
Yeah, that's good. Turn it in. Anybody else? Alright, if there's nothing further, then I would ask you to vote your machines. Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, four C.
Resolution 21-44, declaring fire truck as salvage and authorizing its donation to the city of Lauraville.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Councilman Lewis, second, Councilwoman Ledbetter? Think I heard? Thank you. Uh, this fire truck is, uh, one of the ones that we replaced by buying a new fire truck. Now, this fire truck was a pumper truck. It is so old, which kinda goes hand in hand why we replaced it. It can't be a pumper truck anymore. Okay, so what Lauraville plans on doing with it is making a service truck out of it. So it, it, it still has a value, because it runs and goes down the road, but as far as for the pumping mechanisms and all of that, it's way too old, just to tell you. Uh, any questions? Well, then I would ask you to vote your machines. Thank you all. It's always good to help another community. Madam Clerk, four E.
Resolution 21-45, declaring certain property as surplus and authorizing its disposal.
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Protem, Ricky Gonsalas, and a second by Councilwoman Markott. Is there any discussion on this item? Yes, ma'am.
So these items can't be sold for parts or anything?
Some will be sold for surplus, some will be, some are total junk, some will be sold for scrap. But there are some of them, if you look at the value next to them, like sometime it says fair, some, none, none of them really say good. We hold on to our stuff for a very long time. They say fair or poor. So if we can sell them, we will, um, because we wanna get any money we can. Uh, sometimes, you know, there's been some things that we've done that the scrappers came, it just all got cut up and loaded up. But we will try, like, uh, there are a couple of them on there that still operate that I am hoping to sell, but the first thing is to declare them surplus before we can do that.
Where do you list them at?
Uh, we end up working with LMA and they get listed, and actually someone from the LMA comes and, uh, then they list them for us, uh, and try to sell. You could do it outright, but we're not, we're not set up to do that.
Okay, I gotcha.
So anyway, but most of them unfortunately are in poor condition.
And I'm assuming all of them have been fully depreciated?
Yes, 100%. Long, long, if you hang around here, you're gonna see. We, uh, we hang on to stuff.
Depreciation, right on the back.
Yeah, we, we, we hang on to things quite a long time. Anybody else? Then I would ask you to please vote your machines. And you know what usually happens? We hang on to them and they would give them to Heather, and, uh, and they get some more use out of them. So that's just how it goes, uh. Anyway, thank you all. Item four E.
Resolution 21-46, authorizing the mayor to renegotiate the maintenance agreement, including mowing and litter pickup with the Department of Transportation and Development for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022.
Do I have a motion? Motion, Councilman Broussard, thank you. Do I have a second? Councilman Lewis, is there any discussion on this item?
I was just surprised to see that they don't allow us to subcontract the work.
Well, they don't allow us to subcontract, track the work, and they pay us 30 something thousand dollars for 50 something thousand dollars worth of work. And we were mandated by the state to do this, because if we don't do it, they're not coming to cut it. So where it says renegotiate, that's not so much of a renegotiation. Uh, in my first term, I tried really hard to renegotiate, and they basically said there is no renegotiating. So it's gonna get signed again, unfortunately, at this same price, but this is, the state mandates us to cut these right of ways, and, and we don't have a choice.
I just thought, I mean, something to subcontract and you can't.
Right, right. No, I can't. So any other discussions about these failed renegotiations? Hearing none, please vote your machines. Thank you all. Four F.
Resolution 21-47, accepting change order number one to the re-roofing of 911 Facility and Sloman Theater Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all contracts and documentation in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Protem, Ricky Gonsalas, and a second by Councilwoman Ledbetter. Is there any discussion on this item?
So this is just the, this is some internal work for the 911?
Yes, this is to make our meeting space. You know how we said we were gonna have a city training slash meeting space? This, we got a really good price, and so the, both the police and the fire department have money to contribute to this from the CARES Act, because they wanna utilize these spaces, just like we all will, just like every department will be able to. So while we had a contractor on the job, this was a good way to get with minimal amount of plans, minimal amount of everything, to go ahead and get, uh, the inside at least to a point that we can start using it. It won't be completely finished. We'll have some IT stuff later. Uh, you know, we're gonna set it up as a meeting space, uh, kind of U-shaped tables that are, you know, movable, a few big TV screens, uh, you know, a podium. We like the ability to do a press release where you would have the police logo behind you, or the fire department, or the city's logo. We'd like to have, you know, some smart technology in there that you could hold a seminar, you know, for every department, really. But this will get us, uh, it won't be finished, but this $28,000 will give us a long way to where at least we can start utilizing it.
And the same contractor is doing the roof that's gonna do this work?
Yes, yes. Anybody else? If you don't mind, please vote your machines. Thank you. Madam Clerk, item five A.
Ordinance number 2020-2021-06, amending the budget to account for total cost for repairs to Lewis Street from Admiraldale Drive to South City Limits.
Do I have a motion? I have two of them. Uh, motion by, I think Councilman Lewis was first, and Councilman Broussard was the second. Do we have any discussion on this item? Mr. Councilman Broussard.
All the time we've been in here, a lot of years, I've got a lot of good rapport from the people that we finally doing something nice, and everybody's gonna feel, just that little bit of an area, you can't imagine how the people come out and gave us good remarks on us pushing the city forward on one of our entrances to New Iberia. So it's been very well received, and I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for coming up with that idea. And Ricky, thank you for you and I putting up a little money. I know you're coming up with ideas and you're doing it. We can't do anything, Mr. Mayor, without your okay.
Oh, I can't do without you all.
We, we voted in, but, uh, it's ideas you come up with, and I appreciate you putting that on the block.
I actually took him down a road at 80 miles an hour to make him hear that.
Oh, yeah, well.
Yeah, I don't think so.
You know, uh, we working all together.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You to lead us, and I hope you lead us down the right trail.
Good project, really good project.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, we're talking about from the corner to behind Rouse's, pretty much?
Yes, from the corner of Admiraldale and Lewis to behind Rouse's.
Not actually inside the intersection?
No, no. And this is not, you know, I wanna rain on this, because it's a really good project, okay? But we're not, it is not a total new road construction, okay? For $64,000, that's not what we doing. We would be spending a whole lot more money than that. What we're doing is removing what's loose, fixing ruts, taking out damaged area under those ruts where it's a pothole or whatever, getting at least solid, and then we're resurfacing. But it is a resurface. It is not a total, because I don't want people to think, you know, there were pictures when I first got in office, my first few months, of a big old wide five-lane entrance and all kinda stuff. I mean, that's, that's the project that the parish had, then the parish turned it into a state project. And we're waiting on the state. And with no offense to my friends at the state, we're waiting nine and a half years for a frontage road. So I don't know how long we're gonna wait to do that. So I think this is very wise to say, we're gonna fix this. You know, we're gonna get it back to a sustainable level, because it could be five years, it could be eight years before the, uh, state comes with that big giant project. But there's almost no road left now. I can't tell you. I got lunch at Chick-fil-A. The guy who owns it, Austin, came out. Thank you for fixing that. I went to Rouse's. Somebody told me thank you at Rouse's. You know, the businesses that have developed and have invested so much money in that area really are thankful and see what we're doing. But I just wanted to clarify that, you know, when it's done, I don't want people to say, where's the rest of it? You know, the rest of it will be coming from the state, but our part will, you know, uh, be a good resurface and be something that will last. I think the last time it was resurfaced, 2002? Yeah, so I mean, you know, that's quite a number of years ago. So what we're doing is gonna last and should last until the big project comes. But I just want everybody to know that. Anybody else?
But we find some extra money for maintenance, with this maintenance on it, we'll make it go a little longer.
Yeah, well, if we stop the flooding around town, we, we would stop eroding our road base and our shoulders. You know, we have a lot of ifs that we gotta find, you know? But we working on it. Well, if there's no other discussion on this, please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. And our engineers are already beginning to work on it. Uh, they've, they've already started, so that's a project that will, you know, will become. Madam Clerk, uh, six A.
Resolution 21-48, a recommendation to re-subdivide 408 James Street according to a plat entitled Final Plat, showing partition of property owned by 408 James Street LLC, being portions of Lot 17, Calhoun Edition and Subdivision dated March 19th, 2021 by Paul C. Prince LLC.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Councilman Broussard and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Reed. Do we have any discussion? Yes, ma'am? No discussion? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all. Six B.
Resolution number 21-49, a recommendation for a lot size variance on the following two lots according to a plat entitled Final Plat, showing partition of property owned by 408 James Street LLC, being portions of Lot 17, Calhoun Edition and Subdivision dated March 19th, 2021 by Paul C. Prince LLC.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protem, Ricky Gonsalas, and who was second? I'm not too sure. Uh... Councilwoman Ledbetter, do we have any discussion?
Mayor, I realize what Jane Street is. Uh, what do they plan on doing with the property after they, they wanna build houses there, or?
I'm looking, uh, well, Jane would be here, but she's flooded in at her house, and so she can't get here. Uh, she told me there was no objections. It's residential lots, but I'm not sure.
It's R3.
It's R3, right, right. So what they're gonna do has to fall under R3, but I'm not, I'm not positive, you know, what they're gonna do with it. I knew it was residential. Yeah, yeah. And like I said, she was worried about that, but I said, well, we'll, we'll handle, I mean, she couldn't get here. Anybody else? Hearing none, please vote your machines. Thank you all. Item seven.
Discussion items, future ordinance committee issues to address regulations for residential renters requested by DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Councilwoman Reed.
Alright, so I'm gonna stand here for a second, because I have a little.
Okay.
I'm gonna set this up so that you guys kinda understand why I'm bringing this to our attention.
Okay.
Aaron's gonna switch places with me.
It's gonna warm up. We got the new one coming, but, uh...
Well, this is part of the new set, so this is actually good. This actually works.
You just gird your seat up.
She kicked back on. There we go.
Yeah.
Alright, it's not much, DeeDee.
So it's probably just a setting. Let's try again.
Yeah.
Promise you it did work.
It did, it did.
Good lady.
I even said, I hate when stuff like this happens.
You gird his ear.
See, this is on, that's on.
Let's see. Yeah. You have a door display and all that?
I don't think it does.
There it is.
Alright.
There it is.
Aaron, were you getting nervous?
I see it.
Okay, so, um, I'm, I wanted to bring this up to the council, because, um, I know that as you guys ride around the city, I ride around the city, I see a lot of houses, and we talked about a lot of blighted properties. But we also have a lot of rental properties that are almost considered the same. So I wanted to kinda set the stage for this, so I wanted to kinda talk to you all a little bit about what some of our citizens are facing. So the first thing I wanna do is I want you to concentrate on this area here. That area, you can see this is Admiraldale, and that's 182, so that's like Main Street. And the thing that I want you to pay attention to is that that yellow color here tells you that the income in that area is, can be anywhere from zero to $49,999, okay? So let's kinda keep that in context. The next thing is I want you to understand that the group of people that live in that area, 31% of them have no high school diploma, 46.8% have a high school diploma. 43.4% of them employed, 5.6% unemployed, but 51% are not in the labor force. That means they've stopped looking for jobs. We have 23% of them that don't have a vehicle that live in that area. We have 42% with one vehicle and 26% with two vehicles. We have 45% of them, almost 46%, are owner occupied, but 54% are renter occupied. That's a big number. Now, when you break down their income, 15% make under $10,000, 8.3% make under $15,000, 11% under 20. When you go down the list, 50% of these people make less than $30,000 per year. The average rent around that area can be, the average is 463, the medium is 445. So I, I, I show you these stats, because what I want you to get from this is that these people have few choices. They're not like some of us who actually have an income where we don't like where we live. We can move and go somewhere else. They're not like some of us who actually have an income where we don't like where we live. We can move and go somewhere else. Their income's limited, their mobility's limited, so they don't have as many choices as a lot of people. So some of these people qualify for Section Eight, Section Eight, the Housing Voucher Program. And the people who actually are able to get the voucher, they luck out, because Section Eight requires you to live in a house that is decent, safe, and sanitary. They go out and inspect these houses to make sure that if you get a voucher, you're gonna have a decent place to live. But the one thing we all know is that vouchers are limited. There's only a certain number of vouchers. So everybody who falls in that category isn't gonna get a voucher. So let's not talk about the people who actually are kind of caught in that group of folks that won't get a voucher. And this is not to shame anyone. There's no addresses up here. These are just pictures. I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of what I see. These are the kind of houses that are out there for rent. These houses, and you, we all know this, these houses have been paid for probably fifty years ago. So anybody renting these types of houses are making pure profit. I would venture to say that a lot of these houses don't have any insurance on them whatsoever, and the only expense that the owners having with these houses is taxes. All of these houses are places that people currently live in, except for the one where they have the floor rents on. So now, that's not every single rental house, but that's a lot of what those people fall into that group. That's what they have to live in. All but one of those houses have people living in them. And so what I'm, what my, the reason I'm bringing this up is that it feels like a lot of these houses haven't been warranted to be habitable. So as a council, how do we help the people who don't have choices, who make very little money, live in places that can be warranted for, to be habitable? So my, I know we have the, the, the health and sanitation and property standards that come under our municipal code, but here's the thing. That has to be brought back to our group of people by a person who's renting a home. If I have few choices, more than likely, the one thing I'm not doing is I'm not calling on those people, because what if they evict me? Then where do I go? So as a council, one of the things I'd like for us to talk about is can we adopt some ordinance that require landlords to get a permit that warrants that the house is habitable before it is rented? Because those people are falling in the black hole. And I just feel like there's something, can we do something? I don't know that we can, but I'd like to have a discussion about it. I just wanted to set the stage to give you the facts before we start the discussion. Any questions? All right, that's it. Thank you, Aaron.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Good, thank you for that. So now, open the floor. Is there any discussion? Yes, Councilman Swier.
Yeah, I guess I have a few questions. So right now, anytime a, a renter, a tenant goes and has to turn on power utilities to a home, it has a, an inspection sticker that's put on the meter or whatever that says it's, it's good to go or it's not good to go, in other words, right?
Yes.
That's Jim, that's Jimmy's department, correct?
No, Jimmy does. Come, come up, Jimmy. Cleco can go out and inspect the meter, but every time we do a service change, Cleco now has a charge for that that they used to not have, but anyway.
We go out for service changes.
Right.
Now, if it's a mobile home, whenever anybody moves in, they have to get a, an occupancy permit, and we go check the service and the exterior of the property.
So you do go check the property?
That's just on a mobile home.
Just on a mobile home, that's what I thought, that's why it is. Because on a house, okay.
On a house, I don't do anything.
You switch tenants on a house. We do nothing.
Off and on, we don't do anything.
They just pay Cleco the deposit and, and turn it on.
Right. Right.
So my next comment would be, so my, my concern, I, I appreciate the effort you put into that. That was a very good, uh, presentation, is, so if you force a landlord to go and put more improvements into a home, he can, or he or she, whoever, would have the decision to raise the rent on the tenant. That's my worry. And that, to me, would push more people out the homes and look, have them looking for another place to stay. So.
So I, I, I do get that, Dustin. At some point, though, can we have a, I guess what I'm looking for is for us to come up with a standard that, okay, this house has to meet these standards, otherwise they can't even rent it. You know what I mean? Because if you, if this pure profit, you've been getting profit for thirty years on a house, and you've not, not done any investment, I mean, that just doesn't seem right. And again, I don't know that we can do anything. I'm just trying to bring it to our attention, because we have citizens dealing with this kind of issue.
Correct. So in your, in your mind, what would you consider the investment, new windows, new flooring, new paint, new roof? What, in your mind, what should that, what's the guidelines as far as making that house up to par?
I can tell you, when I was campaigning, and I don't know about other people, when I was campaigning, there were several porches I stepped on, where they were boards that literally I almost went through the floor.
Right.
On porches.
The houses she showed you are the good ones.
Exactly. That's not even the worst ones. So my thing is, is that there's, there are properties, even if we said that every house that was rented had to go through the Section Eight guidelines, so if nothing else, if those people can get a safe and clean, inhabitable place, why can't the others? Why can't we use the same standards that we use for Section Eight? Say, if you're gonna rent a house in Louisiana, in, in New Iberia, it has to meet these standards. Otherwise, you cannot be a landlord. Because we, that look, it makes our city look bad, too. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
No, no.
As long as, you know, it's not a debate, we have a discussion.
No, no, it's a discussion.
Yeah, hang on, hang on. At one at a time, we got the floor. Dustin, you still have the floor, or you, you got anything else?
I'd like to use, here's, but anybody else has to say.
What I'm gonna do is what I normally do, I'm gonna go around and everybody make a remark, and then we'll come back.
Can, do you want me to answer questions if they ask them directly to me?
If they ask you, yes. Let's do it like that. If they ask you a question, because normally I try to stop, you know, where everybody gets a shot. But yeah, it's your item that you brought, so in this case, yeah, if they ask a question directly, I'll just kind of make sure it keeps flowing.
Okay.
So who had to have next? Okay.
So.
I'm just gonna run around.
So Dee Dee, I think, you know, I want to commend you for the efforts, because I think that it's a problem that's very relevant to every elected official resident, and it, you can't keep hiding behind it and denying it, but I think, I think as a government entity, we, we skating on private property issues here. And you just made a comment that, you know, why can't we tell the owner to put more money into his house to improve living conditions? Well, when you sign up for Section Eight in hood housing, you sign a contract with the federal government and stating that you will do these improvements in order to get the check from the federal government. If you do not, you get no check. With private business, you do the improvement, you're not guaranteeing the check from the renter. He can skip town on you, you can, you know, so in a private business mentality, when you have rent houses, you're running a business, just like Walmart, just like barber shop, whatever. You're looking at your overall revenue versus your overall expenses, and, and it's insecure with tenants. So landlords may feel that they can't invest as much because their rent's not so secure. So I think obviously, if the landlord invests more money, that he has to recapture his, his expenses, because he's in business to make a living or make profit, whatever he's doing. And I think that, you know, therefore, it's gonna, that cost gotta come out of somewhere, and it's gonna come out the tenant. Now, do I think that, you know, they forcing people to live in houses that are uninhabitable? I, I don't think that's a way to go about running your business, but unfortunately, people are opting to run their properties as they see fit to return revenue on their investment. And I think government stepping into that can be very, very marginal in what we can and can't do. But I'm not saying there's no solution to the problem. I just think that we need to be very careful when, when we deal with private businesses.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Broussard, I'll just kind of go around, that's what they, Mr. Broussard. Councilman, please help.
We're dealing with inspectors, plumbers, carpenters. Man, they gonna get in there and charge that and run the price up to where it's whacking, and you'll be charging double the price. So we inherited, I, we, my wife inherited two rent houses lately, because of, my dad had died and mom had died. But, you know, we digging into a big old nethag here. I think that we don't want to get involved too hard in, but if it's real bad, board the house up. We have rules for that. If it's real bad, we gonna tear it down, you know, if it's that bad. So we have rules and regulations for that. So I don't know about getting on private property with these inspectors that you want to bring in. They gonna run that price up so high. The plumbing all underneath the house, or anything in the house they want to change. They can just put their finger on, and you gotta change that until it's done right. So I'm, I'm a hard believer in the government not getting too deep in other people's property.
Thank you. Councilman.
What, what I seen in, and that's a good presentation, a very good presentation, but what I gathered from it was, uh, poverty. That's what I gathered from it, poverty. And the result of poverty goes so far back that I care not to discuss where it comes from. And I think right now, we're in a place in, in America, in Louisiana, in the South, where opportunities are a little better than they were, say, in the fifties or sixties. Uh, most of the people that I grew up under grew up in Mixon Quarter, Landry Quarter, you know, Oaklawn Plantation, Ave Rowland, Week out, all those people came from those places. But when they left those places, they left with a sense of pride that said, I don't want to go back there. And when I see this today, I see a people that are all right with going back to what is considered to be a plantation-style living. And to me, it boils down to a choice, not necessarily that you made the choice, but the choice was made for you, almost generational poverty. And to me, that has to be taught on another level. How do I increase my level of living and my level of, of quality of life? And since I've been doing community revitalization through Neighbor Works America, Southern Mutual Health, we've seen these issues, and actually, you need to go in, in the inside of some of these houses. And all I was thinking about is, um, ugly meets cold, you know, and it, ugly meets cold. Uh, I'll speak on a set of houses, and I think Mr. Henry Mixon won't mind. A set of the houses came up, the Mixon houses came up on Anderson Street, which is in my district, but that's okay. That was a good example. Uh, I know right now, uh, Mr. Henry Mixon, uh, Paul Schneck Schneider, Shayk Schneider, myself, and Weckner, we're going to, uh, do some volunteering to spruce up the neighborhood. So, you know, it, it's, it's kind of hard, it's a very sensitive subject. When you look at where people live and what they have to live in and why they're living there. That's the question, why are they living there? And that's the one that's really hard to, to ask. But being an African American that grew up in an impoverished neighborhood, that grew up in a house that was probably below the median poverty income level, I feel like I can say it. I feel like I'm almost an authority to say it, because if somebody else has said it, it may even seem, uh, uh, disproportionate or, or impartial, but I'm gonna say it, because I've been there. And I think at the end of the day, uh, it's a whole psychic change that a community has to have to not want to live in those conditions. And if the truth be told, and I'll say this, white like black live in those type of homes. You know, so it's not a black or white thing as much as it is a poverty thing. And I'm gonna tell you, I, I ride through District Three, and I ride through District Two, and I ride through District Five, and they got pockets of that all over. And the reason why I drive, ride through District Three, because it reminds, it reminds my grandpa, he, he used to, uh, District Two was part of Tico Toe back in, when he was there, and I ride around, I look at how it used to be and how it is now, and it's like, you know, a lot of people have not taken pride, and when the, and, and some of them are landlords that haven't taken pride. But I kind of get what Ricky's saying, too. Man, it's hard to maintain those houses when people keep coming in and going out. I looked at a house on Hocken Street that is, was, was owned by a close friend of my family. The lady died, left the house to her brother, and man, I can't call his name, man, he catching hell, man. People in and out, and I watch that house just go down. And that's a hard fight right there. That's a hard fight. So I think individually and collectively, we have to work on that. And individually is, let me start taking care of my own stuff. Collectively is, when I see you taking care of yours, I might be shamed into taking care of mine, and that's part of the revitalization that we need to see in our community. But I don't know, if we can get the landlords to partner with us, with Western Neighbor Association, with, like, we got a partnership right now with Henry Mixon, with Mr. Shayk Schneider's gonna do the painting, Weckner's gonna support it, I'm gonna support it, because it's right across from the school. We're gonna put some paint on, we're gonna do what we can do. You know, but he's right, and he's right. It's a business, and when you put money in your business, now you have to go up on your rent. So we back at the, we back at the poverty conversation. How do these people pay for this? And surely, I don't expect some of these landlords, because most of them, though they're business people, most of them are good people who providing a service to people that would probably be homeless. So I don't expect those people to go up after they paint, but at some point, when they paint the first time, and two, three, ten minutes later, they have to do it again, they gonna eventually go up. So it's, it's, I don't know, man, it's, it's gonna take a holistic approach from the community, from the people living in there, because guess what? Personally, and I hate to say this like that, I made a decision to not live like that no more, and I'm gonna do it right in the community where I'm at. You know, my Aunt Peggy, I love her to death. My Aunt Peggy, she lived on Ebert Street. When she first moved there, Ebert Street was better than it is now. And now it has gone down a little bit from renters and from people leaving. And then you walk in my Aunt Peggy's house, you walking in the Taj Mahal. Some of y'all done been there? You, you walking in the Taj Mahal. So she take pride in her house, she take pride in inside her house, and there are plenty of people that do, but it's just not collective. It would be nice to see seven, eight, nine, ten Aunt Peggy's in a row, or Miss Helen Harrison's in a row. I'm calling these people names because they got nice homes in a row. It would be nice to see that. And these people been there over fifty years. So how do we get that message out to not just the landowners, but to the people that live in there, that we have to do better as well in the areas we live in? That's all I want to say.
Was that a question or you just?
No, that's a statement.
Okay.
I know the answer.
Okay, do other cities have anything implemented like this for their renters? Is that where this is coming from? See, I wasn't familiar.
So, um, even on the, what's it, municipal code, there's some municipal code or something like that, and that's where our stuff is, too. There are some cities that actually have, um, standards for rental property. Um, and I, I kind of looked through some of that. I printed some of them out. But we have, there are certain places where they just have a standard saying, okay, these are the things that have, that have to be in place in order for you to rent a house. And again, I understand that renting a house is a business. I have a rental property. I get it. But you know what? I always make improvements on my property to make sure that I can keep tenants in, and they realize that I want them to keep the property up. These houses, this is pure profit, and they're not putting, not even one percent back into them. All I'm saying is that, you know, if you put, uh, you keep a one, ten percent of the money that the tenant is giving you so that every time somebody leaves, you can paint, just like apartment complexes do. When a tenant leaves, they go back in and they paint, they clean the carpet. None of that is happening. And I'm, 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 I'm just saying that I get it that people, and we're all working on trying to help people understand that they can buy their own homes, they can live better. We're all trying to do that in our communities. What can we do to help them and even help our city as a whole by making sure that people who run a business like that, they rent homes, that they keep their houses, they keep their, their properties at some level, some standard, so that I, we never look, we never drive around our city looking at houses that look like that, and that they're renting to other people. I'm just, can we have a baseline? That's, that's what I'm, and maybe we can't. I'm just trying to figure out, I'm asking a question because I don't know if the question was asked before, because I wasn't here.
Jeff, you had your hand up.
Yeah, the whole point of bringing things to the council before they go to the ordinance committee is to see if there's any interest. Yeah, the whole point of bringing things to the council before they go to the ordinance committee is to see if there's any interest in pursuing it. So I appreciate this discussion. I think it's a good thing. And hopefully, you know, y'all will decide whether or not you want to pursue this. I've, I've, I never heard, well, I've been to a lot of council meetings and I have not heard a high-level discussion, you know, like this going on, issues like this. So this is, it's a good thing. If you have a warranty, a warranty is a promise. So if you have a warranty that something meets certain standards, you still got to have some kind of enforcement or inspection or something so you can figure out, because if you've got people who don't have choices and people who don't want to upset the landlord and don't want to lose their leases, are they really gonna turn the landlord in for substandard stuff? I mean, you're trying to avoid that. So unless you have a change of occupancy permit, you know, where you do an inspection or something like that, I don't know how you're gonna catch this kind of thing.
Well, that's what I'm asking for, Jeff, exactly what you said. A permit, before you can rent it again, you gotta get a permit, which means an inspection would have to happen.
Yeah, so you know, you got to process, you got to have a standard, but you know, to have a standard and not enforce it doesn't do any good. And to have a standard and count on the tenant to blow the whistle and the landlord is probably not going to be any good.
Correct.
And you know, Brooke's got a great question, has somebody done this before? You know, because we always like to steal solutions rather than invent them, if somebody else has thought this through. So maybe some other municipalities, you know, are thinking about the same things and trying to do this. Now, we're a long way from having a proposal, but when we do, there's gonna be a discussion, and there gonna be some landlords who would show up.
I know, I know.
You know, and that's, that's how this process is gonna have to work. But yeah, if we could borrow something from somebody else, that's better than inventing it. But there's got to be some kind of process, and I'm glad I didn't write it and then give it to y'all to have you tear it apart in that order. But there's got to be some kind of process where somebody looks at that building who's not the tenant and makes a judgment about it.
Yes, sir.
First thing I'll tell you is, I'll bring up our Section Eight. Haley took over our Section Eight. We had 215. We now have 225 vouchers. When we can get to 235, which we have the vouchers, we're trying to fill them. At 235, she takes it back into the profit margin, okay? Because at 205 and 210 and 215, we're not covering all of our expenses. She's really doing a good job at getting it up. One thing that has to happen, if we're gonna be profitable with that and provide the best housing we can, we need more HUD housing. So if nothing else develops out of this conversation, that's something that we could all do and try to promote is that people get into the Section Eight housing business. There are many, many houses. I do know that as a landlord, some people are scared to do that because they say the federal government's qualifications are gonna be way up. They're really not, you know, they're not. So one thing to educate our landlords and to tell them, you want rent that is guaranteed, you want rent at little risk, okay? I own quite a lot of rental property, no houses, it's all commercial. I'm not profitable in all of them, you know, it takes the mass total of all of them for me to come out. Yes, I'm working toward retirement, and one day I'll be profitable, but right now, you know, between tenants leaving, between every time I pull a permit to make some repairs, then the taxman comes and my value goes up by those permits that I pull, no offense, when my insurance goes up, when, you know, all those factor in to where, you know, I'm not making this, and I bought them, some of them as recently as last year. So sometimes I'm buying a hundred-year-old building, but I didn't own it for a hundred years. So that profit, you know, you can't say it was paid, it was paid for by the person that sold it to me, and sometimes two people back. But you know, when I'm taking them on, I have a note and I'm not nearly in the profit picture. And sometimes that happens. Some of these houses are not, some of them are the original family owners and they've never changed, but some of them are. New people get in the game and then they're kind of like, I gotta figure this out. I got a note, I got taxes, I got insurance. My God, you gotta have liability insurance. I mean, you at least have to have that. So there are some other factors that some of these houses, if someone just acquired them a few years ago, they still trying to figure the game out and understand how am I gonna come out and pay for this. But HUD is a great way through Section Eight to get our level up and they're inspected. So that's something that I would really want to push if we, you know, if we decide to proceed with some of this or none of it or whatever. HUD is a great example of how you can take a house and get some guaranteed rent without a lot of risk. So that's one thing. You know, the other thing, I do hear their concerns about, you know, I improve my property and then I have to go up and my tenant can't afford it. That, you know, because that plays into the first set of stats that you put up. It's why maybe people are trapped there, but it's also why they're there because it's what they can afford. And until, you know, I'm gonna take my one little pitch that I never do, but you know, if we didn't spend a trillion dollars sending it to all kinds of other countries, we could fix our problems here. And if we handled our citizens' problems and if government in general worried about poor people and didn't worry about what color they are and where they live and everything else, and we just help poor people, we'd be much better off. I can't fix the whole worldview though, you know? And we're got to melt that down to New Iberia. So I do realize that I want my city to be the most sellable city it can be. These new businesses that come, the new jobs, of course, I want all of my citizens to have the best quality of life they can. And part of the quality of life is where you live. I do realize that. Do I immediately have an answer because it is a business and this is not only in the area that you showed? I would love to see the stats for the whole town. And we, you know, you can go across the bay and all of those neighborhoods that used to be the family that built the house in the 40s and the 50s and lived there till probably the 80s, okay? You know, I went to college and I came back and I started noticing they were rent houses. Well, you know, fast forward 30 years and it is, it is really, really, that same stat you have of 60% rent houses probably throughout our whole town. So neighborhoods change when you have rent houses, you know, home ownership is really something else that, and I know you're doing that. You know, we got HUD over here early on and said, what kind of home ownership programs do you have? They have up to $25,000 to put down for you to own a home. So I do think we could have a multifaceted approach of trying to get HUD, trying to foster some home ownership. There is a very good pattern of our communities beginning, your town hall was great the other night. You had people from every side of town saying, people from across the bay, Little Brooklyn saying, I want to help. People from uptown and downtown saying, we're gonna redo houses in your area, they're gonna come in the other areas. So fostering these kind of neighborhood, community self-help groups, if you will, that are beginning to say, let's take pride in our neighborhood, let's take, we should all be part of that as much as we can and try to cross-pollinate these groups because we're gonna get more neighborhoods fixed, you know? And I can tell you from personal experience in St. Martinville, we fixed up three commercial buildings in a kind of a rough areas you entered into St. Martinville, and it caused with a grant of $10,000 and it caused probably six other buildings to spruce their act up, like you were saying, that, you know, you kind of shame your neighbors into doing it. So some of what we, kind of this grassroots thing that we have going, it's actually working. It's at its infancy, but it's working. So I think a combination of hitting it at a multi-pronged approach is where we need to be as a council and as neighborhoods, as districts and as a town. So I thank you for bringing it up because it does raise awareness to one of our problems. You know, we're hoping to take some money and throw towards the adjudicated properties. We're constantly looking for solutions with that. My little one block at a time that I'm trying to get going is basically this. Basically, what we're doing is melting it down to how can we lift our neighborhoods, lift our quality of life, and lift our curb appeal, if you will? Because, you know, we want that investment, you know, I'm tired of having to plan my trek with a developer and don't bring them in certain parts of town and ride them around in a big giant circle just to get where I want so that they see the positive. Unfortunately, sometimes we have to do that. But so it's a, it's a great discussion, and this is, this is what we're supposed to be doing. This is, you know, a night like this is when you go home and say, this is government at work. So where we head from this, I'm not sure, but I'm certainly sitting here enjoying the conversation. Anybody else have anything else?
I think, I gotta.
Sure.
So I think, I think, Didi, I think immediately, and Freddie reiterated, you know, the HUD 8 system, HUD 8 application system really incentivizes the landlords to make improvements and they get returned back. So, you know, with the opportunity of X amount of HUD houses available, that's the immediate action you could take is approaching landlords or blocks of houses and listen, he may not be, let's use Mr. Mixon for instance. He may not be even aware of HUD 8. Say, listen, would you consider blocking these housing HUD? You know, here's the application, here's Haley to talk to him, you know, that may be an immediate impact that you can make a difference in. And, you know, I think that's worthwhile pursuing. But if we look at what government's doing and how we want to improve our curb appeal, we made a decision tonight, all of us. We're gonna improve these roads in these communities. What more does it incentivize it takes if you put a brand-new road in a neighborhood, drives people's spirits up, hey, let's improve my house? So, you know, little things that government does, you know, is gonna go a long way in improving the community. But I think if you pursue that HUD 8 immediately, that could have a dramatic impact.
I wonder if I could take some promotion money and do a little promotion campaign around town for Section Eight.
And I will say, I don't know if you're aware of.
That would be, that would work.
Are you aware of the program, Louisiana Real Assistance, State Louisiana Real Assistance Program? You could also pursue those opportunities through them as well.
I needed to say that I like the idea about, and I don't know if it will work, about having landlords go through the same inspection as Section Eight. You know, how often, how regularly, I guess we'll work that out later on if we get to that. But I also say we need to promote, and what you're doing, and I've been doing, and others have done, we need to promote home ownership in those communities. Home ownership will run the slumlord out of town. You know what I mean? So we need to promote that. And I'm gonna say it, you said it, he said it. I just bought two homes, two houses last year. My plans, everybody said, what you gonna do with them? I ain't renting them. I want to remodel them and sell them. Now, of course, if they don't sell, I'm gonna have to put a rent sign up there, but that's my plans. Because I don't want 21 rent houses and all of them falling down. I don't, that's the, that's the problem I did not comment on. Some of them landlords, and I'm gonna say this, they got too many houses for their own good. They can't take care of them. Another statement, no question.
True statement. Anybody else? Well, this is a good discussion, and the next thing we'll have to decide is what do we want to do about it? You know, I don't know that we'll decide that tonight, but I do think, you know, it's a lot, sometimes these discussions are gonna be, have so much information and so many facets to them, we probably won't make a decision, you know, immediately. But this is a big one, but this is a good discussion. I'm serious. I'm gonna look and see if I can't use a little promotion money and help Haley promote her Section Eight program. That's a good possibility. I had forgot about the Real Assistance. That's a good one. I mean, anything we do to improve our lot is improving our lot as a whole, as a city. So this was a really good conversation.
And truly, from the heart, I challenge you, Didi, to go out and hold a town hall with just landlords and ask them what they're inputted. Because I can guarantee you, we're not even thinking close to what these guys are thinking and these renters are thinking. And it's gonna be, and Jeff's right, it's gonna be a fire show with some of them.
But if you give an opportunity, make more money.
That's what I'm trying to say. You know why people have those houses? They have those houses to make a profit, and we are all in business to make a profit. If you're in business not to make a profit, then you're not gonna be in business long. So that's why I think that's the answer. Let's find a way to financially incentivize them.
And don't forget Louisiana Housing Corporation and the CHODO program.
The what?
CHODO, C-H-D-O. We'll talk about it a little.
Okay.
Good. Thank y'all. Great discussion. Now we'll go to Councilman's remarks, as if y'all didn't talk enough. I will start with Dustin.
I'll admit it tonight, just one, with all the weather going on and stuff, just say a little prayer to our neighbors out to the west. They caught hell last year with the hurricanes, and now they're getting it back again with these floods. So whatever we can do to help them out, let's do that. So thank you.
Thank you.
So I would like to thank everyone who came to the community meeting last Thursday. We had a great turnout. I'd like to thank Harold Alexander and Robbie Carrier-Bethel for speaking to the group about the revitalizations they've done with their organizations. We learned a lot. I have a lot of people excited about creating a neighborhood association downtown. People who want to go in and help clean up empty lots, cut grass, that's what Jimmy to do, and all kinds of things. So that was really exciting. I want to thank the mayor and the mayor pro tem for attending the meeting, and also Jimmy for attending the meeting because that really helped and showed the support of the council behind all of these initiatives that we have going on. And I actually forgot something, but I had, the Westgate students actually won a championship, and I wanted to congratulate them on it, and I had the article and I forgot it at home. So, but congratulations to all the young people who participated in that sport. That's it.
I just want to say that our community activity at the Masonic Hall on Ann Street was successful on Saturday, last Saturday. Lots of community, lots of the community did come out and partake with us in hot dogs, chips, and a drink. It ran very, very well. And we are right now, of course, into our community initiative, health initiative. And hopefully, some of my council members will support that, you know, with a donation for that organization so that we can continue to do such things. So thank you all. Thank the community for their involvement, and we're happy to give back. Thank you.
Thank you.
So a couple of things, Saturday, the mental health awareness run. I just got noticed that they approaching 275 runners, big deal, big turnout. So should have something downtown. If you're a runner or want to participate and watch it, should be very interesting. Was very impressed. A bunch of us attended the Kathleen Blanco unveiling of the thing. That was very well-attended. Got high remarks on our city for such an event. And just a short story, Mayor, just to reiterate on your, and I keep pointing at Didi, Westgate State Track Championship. Did you hear about the story what happened?
No.
You did not? So I, and I was fortunate to hear at the, from Mr. Lavi led, the school board president, you understand, right, president? So superintendent, superintendent. So Westgate's behind by four points to win the state championship. Four by four, 100 relay was the last leg, they had to win it to win the state championship. And you can hear my voice crawl because it's pretty emotional, and they had to win it. Well, they won it. They won it, pushed them over the edge, but on the way back, the race ended on the back of the track. So the whole team is cheering, celebrating the state championship, and these four gentlemen, minority in nature, walked around the track and they had an elderly woman fall out of a wheelchair on the track, face down. They stopped, picked this lady up, pushed her to the side while their team cheered the championship. And it was very emotional, and the principal said it was just part of what those kids represent and how their, you know, their state championship wasn't more important than helping to settle a lady out of a wheelchair. So I thought it was pretty detrimental of how they showed their courage and their spirit, and it wasn't important, the state championship. So I wanted, she shared that with us at the meeting. Very good.
Thank you. Mr. Russo.
Again, Kathleen's event was very nice. It showcased our facilities. The one right in back of us is Gazeebo. We watched when the wall, we had to put, I remember that like it was yesterday, bracing the wall from the bricks falling out, falling down. We've come a long ways, a long ways to make it so nice. I was looking at the Kathleen thing, but I was really looking around in there, Mr. Mayor, how our facility was so nice. But Kathleen brought a lot of things down to Nyhambria, all over the state. One of them was the 650, is that right, $650,000 for the Armaco Canal that we gave Mr. Jarak when she begged me? A lot for that money, 15 years in the works for that. So $650,000 from Kathleen was for the railroad. We moved it to Armaco Canal and put it over the top. I hope it's helping your drainage, Marlo.
It's helping our drainage.
I hope it's helping your drainage.
It's helping our drainage.
Because that's one big project Kathleen brought money down for this city, and we used it the right place, I think. But I just want to make sure she's not forgotten about in Nyhambria.
I just got a fax. My Aunt Peggy told me to tell you thank you.
I hope it's working.
No, I don't have no comment. Congratulate Westgate. I think I left all my passion for my community on the floor when we were dealing with housing. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I really just had a question. What phase of COVID do we have to be in before we can start picking up litter?
Oh, pick up litter?
Shouldn't be too much longer. I have one of my transport officers that won't be able to. He has a compromise system. He has something that he's dealing with. So I only have one that can drive the van. That's my problem right now. So I need to get my other guy healthy, and he's working on that. But anyway, it'll be a little while because I'm having only two with the amount of work they have right now. It's, the judge and I talked two weeks ago, maybe last week about that because he is beginning, you know, court's open again and he's, people are getting community service. So I'm trying to figure that out of how I can accommodate that with only the one driver that I have. But it won't be too much longer.
Uh, but it won't be too much longer. We're gonna figure it out. Cause I would like to see that. I mean, the PD put money up in its infancy and it's being farmed to buy a litter van because we know that that's important. Uh, so we talk about, you know, we would like to see that running again. So I, I, I'm in the process of trying to figure that out.
Okay, gotcha. That's really all I had.
Okay, great. I don't have too many tonight. Uh, town hall was really good. Kathleen's ceremony was awesome, off the chart and just really kinda got our community together and kinda, you think about your blessings. You think about the people who've come before us and who worked their way all the way up the ladder and really did so much, you know? We, we're just, you know, down, we're the bottom pegs. But, uh, to, to see somebody that served that many positions and, uh, you know, rep, public service commissioner, lieutenant governor, then the governor from here and to see, you know, the impact that she had across our state, uh, but certainly for us. Uh, just kinda neat and kinda inspires you to keep doing this, you know, that, that it is a worthwhile, you know, profession, I'm gonna call it. Um, but in, anyway, uh, congratulations to Westgate. And, uh, our next meeting is June the first. We ask people to still participate in our MS4 Stormwater Survey that's online. And we still have properties for sale on Civic Source. And with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Thank y'all.